Welcome to 299.
Arizona, I had a red light curse. I could find every red light. Here I am able to always be at the very worst part of the stop for construction.
You're the guy, the first guy in line?
Oh, yeah.
That's me.
The gift.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Very good. Good morning.
Good morning. All right. Well, welcome everyone to the June 18th meeting of the Trinity County Board of Supervisors. My apologies for getting a little bit of a late start. Also wanted to let you know Supervisor Gogan is joining us remotely. His location was posted in advance as required. And Supervisor Carpenter Harris is en route. She has run into some issues, so she will join us in progress. And if you'll stand and join me, I'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we are going to start with presentations. We have two today. The first is Health and Human Services, Office of Emergency Services. We will receive a presentation from Emergency Operations Manager Philip Simi regarding wildfire preparedness.
Before we start, Chair, Council, doesn't Supervisor Gogan need to have his video on?
Technically no, because we're utilizing the teleconference provision, not the sick or out of business provision, but it would likely be a good idea.
Okay, I just know at some point that was a requirement, you had to have video.
It is. If you're utilizing the government code section for when you're away on work and/or you're unavailable due to sickness, you have to have your video on, and you have to identify who's in the room with you. He is an alternative location, which is a different code section, which doesn't have that same requirement, but I think it would make good sense to do it if it's possible.
All right, just wanted to make sure we were legit before we started.
Thank you, sir. All right, Mr. Simi.
Good morning, members of the board, Chairman Luke Wyler, CIO Tethill, Philip Simi, Emergency Operations Manager for the Trinity County Office of Emergency Services. I was asked by Director Hamilton to do a short presentation on what are the OES office is doing for the community and Trinity County in preparation of wildfire. Do you have? Okay, thank you. So, some of the things that we have been doing over the last couple of months with the help of Skyler Fisher from Resource Conservation District. They've been holding community meetings on our hazard mitigation plan, public review, and our evacuation route plan. These community meetings have been going on, like I say, for the last couple of months. We still have two more coming up. We have one tonight in Post Mountain. And then the last one in Junction City on June 25th. These meetings give the public an opportunity to go over our evacuation route plan. They can look at the areas in their community. Make sure that the roads that we've listed as evacuation routes are viable roads, that these roads don't have any locked gates, that we're unaware of, if the road is still a viable road, if it hasn't been damaged by winter storms, things like that. It's also a great opportunity for us to engage with the community, ask a lot of questions, and make sure that they're aware of all of these resources that are available. I think, actually, if I went to go back one slide. Okay, I don't know, it might be out of order. There we go. So anyway, I'd like to kind of go over a little bit about this. Some of the other things that we've been doing, we just recently, last week, we held a local area advisor workshops. Our local area advisors in our communities help the county to share information, like we have an incident management team come in about the terrain, about roads, water sources, things like that. So we did a with the help of RCD, we did a workshop last week and had a great turnout. We have 11 local area advisors. We had eight in attendance, and the discussions not only for disseminating information to them about what's expected of a local area advisor, but also to ask them what the county can do to assist them in their positions. This meeting was attended by our District Ranger, Tara Jones, and she did a great presentation on what these local area advisors would expect if they were asked to come to an incident management team, a community meeting, or a cooperators meeting. So those are some of the things. We're also got a lot of things in the work with social media campaigns to also bring a lot of this information forward, newspaper publications. So one of the first items, probably one of the most, is our Code Red program, which is what we use to send out alerts and warnings on evacuations. These alerts are put out by the Sheriff's Department. This information we've had now public for several years, and we're still continuing to show up at community meetings, farmers markets, anywhere that we can to make sure that people are well aware of it, especially when we have new residents move to the county. I'm happy to say that through some of my research that I've done with our zones that I can actually go in and look at how many residents are in these zones, and I can actually go back and look to see how many people have signed up for Code Red in the zones. So that way, we can look to see if there's particular areas of the county that we need to focus more on in getting people signed up. So that's something that I've been in the works recently. The Trinity County Know Your Zone and the zone maps through the website that's on the screen there. That's the site that people can actually go in and look for what zone that their resident is located in. There are 387 zones in Trinity County, so that can be very confusing to people. I constantly tell them, if you have any questions at all, feel free to reach out to me. I am more than willing to talk with them on the phone or whatever I have to do to make sure that they know what their zone is, how it works. And then when these alerts are put out by the Sheriff's Department, not only will it list the zone that they're putting either into a warning or into a mandatory evacuation, but there's zone descriptions that are also included in that verbiage that goes out, and that is basically the roads that encompass that particular zone. And something that we're working towards with this evacuation route plan is that when those alerts come out, not only will they give them the zone that's in the warning or the mandatory evacuation and the roads, but it will actually list what we have put in there for the evacuation route to make sure. You know, we have people that come into the community that stay in Airbnbs and things like that, so we want to make sure that we have plenty of information out there. We're working with the owners of these Airbnbs to have this information in their units, so when people are visiting, and if they you know, hear an alert or something, you know, start hearing sirens, they know where to look. So it's a long process. It's a lot of community engagement, but it's well worth it. And I think that the the community meetings and the social media campaigns are very successful, and we're going to keep doing that. Another program that I inherited when I took this position was the emergency alert sirens. I inherited four sirens, and I'm happy to say that we have the first one off the ground. It is on a pole behind the Weaverville Fire Department. And that's another program that I will actually, I'll be doing a presentation on that for you in the near future, explaining how those work and how we're going to educate the public on when they, you know, when we do have to test these or set these off. So more information to come. One of the other items on here that we really try to push people to is the Watch Duty app when these people, you know, that have smartphones. This app is run by volunteers and they monitor scanner activity. And so I have to say that the information is put out quickly and seems to be very accurate. I was monitoring one of the fires in Shasta County just recently that one of my children were involved in and, you know, were evacuated from. And I was very happy to see that the information from what I could hear on the radio and what I could see on their app seems to stay very consistent. So these are just things that we bring up to people, and, you know, we'll have all of this information on the OES website. Firesafe Council's website also has this information. And like I say, if all else fails, call me, and I'll make sure that we walk through people. And then the next slide. So some of the other resources that we use, the government has ready.gov, and this is a a great resource for people to look at. There's a lot of information on home hardening. What, you know, some of the things that you want to make sure that you have when you're gathering supplies, making a plan. There's also the American Red Cross has a great website that has a wildfire safety checklist to make sure that people grab the right the great, grab the right items and just be prepared for it. As I mentioned, there's 387 zones in Trinity County, and so it can get very confusing. And so we've created what we call the vial of life. Now, this was a little actually, I mean, I have some here. It's just a little sleeve, magnetic sleeve that's on the refrigerator, and this actually came about that was the kind of a copy of the vial of life, and there in these pockets are a lot of information, a lot of cards that you can put your information in, you know, emergency contacts, doctors. So if somebody is incapacitated, first responders show up, at least they have this information available. So with the help of Public Health Emergency Preparedness, we added this little card of Know Your Zone. So we've been handing these out, and they've been very popular. We've put out you know, probably a thousand of these things over the last few months, and people can actually write their zones. They can, they know exactly what zone they are on. There's also information on there on how to contact OES, how to contact Public Health. And there's also the new QRL codes that a lot of people are starting to use a lot more of it. And also, a lot of people are, you know, struggling to understand what this fuzzy little box is. But once again, you know, if anybody ever has any questions at all, I'm always available to answer any questions, sit down and get people signed up with Code Red, explain to them where their zones are, whatever I need to do. And I am available for any question. Oh, hey, there's another picture. Forgot about that one. So this just kind of shows how, this is how the zones of the county is broken up into zones, the 387 zones. It can get very confusing and a little bit overwhelming, but if you zoom in. One of the things that I did yesterday that I was actually happy to see is I picked one of the zones in Weaverville, actually the zone that I live in, and checked to see how many, if I were to put an alert out, how many people it would go to. And just in that one zone in Weaverville, it was going to go to over 500 people. So that makes me feel good that this program is working, that people are signing up. And we just keep, you know, talking to them at every chance we get to make sure that we've covered the entire county. So if anybody have any questions for me.
Yeah, I do. I, easy question. I tried to log in on my laptop and my phone with the public.co red web.com, and I got forbidden access is denied. I use your QR code and it worked, but what would you advise to myself or anybody who maybe got an access denied? Can you think of what I might have done wrong or what might be happening?
I'm not real good computer whiz when it comes to the warnings and things like that. I would say if anybody has any issues at all, just to contact me. And I will make sure that we figure it out and work it through. But, you know, I have resources through our IT department to maybe understand why that would be. I know that you and I were sitting down at one point and you couldn't, it wouldn't automatically pop up on your screen, but yet my laptop, your address came right up. So I didn't want to go there.
Thank you.
Okay. Philip, I just, one thing, I know this map, as you said, can somewhat, can be somewhat overwhelming for people. So could you just take a practical application and say here, I live in this zone, or my relative is in this zone. So what does this tell me? How do I use this? Why do I care that there's 380 some things on this map?
Well, I mean, if somebody were to reach out to me, I mean, the way this is broken down, now the reason, I mean, are you kind of asking why we went to the zones in the beginning?
So if somebody says, oh, great, a resource, but I don't know how to use it. So what does it tell me? How does it benefit me other than I can say I'm in this zone, then what?
Well, this is the way the information is going to come out through Code Red. When a Code Red alert is sent out, if it's either going to be an evacuation warning, an evacuation order, it could be other information. It could be a warning or a shelter in place. There might be a situation with you know, emergency situation, active shooter, something like that. The first information that's going to go out is what that situation is, but then it's going to say which zone that this information is being directed to. In the past, when alerts used to go out, they would literally just say, these streets in this area are under evacuation warning or under evacuation, mandatory evacuation. The reason why we've gone to these zones and all of these other counties have, one of the main reasons is that it simplifies the process for whoever's putting this alert out. When you figure that if there's a fast-moving incident and somebody has to type down, type up a half a dozen streets, and as we've all seen, especially in Trinity County, is a lot of areas have the same name of this. It might be a street, a road, a way, an avenue, a circle. So this simplifies it and corrects a lot of that issue, a lot of those issues. So it, and it speeds up the process. When I just had a meeting with with the dispatch and a training on the Code Red on Friday, and to be able to grab that zone, grab the verbiage that you want to put out, because you want to put it out in several different platforms. You want to put it out in voice, you want to put it out in text, you want to put it out in email. To be able to copy and paste this stuff, and it's already pre-written. A lot of it is already pre-planned and pre-written. It speeds the process, gets the information out to the people faster. So if it's a fast-moving situation, you don't want to dispatch your especially like somebody like me hunting and pecking for all the letters. And to make sure that the information's getting out. So, and to say, if you look at a map, any county that you go to has gone to these zones. And it is confusing. I spoke with my wife this morning about it, and it's, you know, there's still a lot of frustration with, why do we have to go to this? It's to get the right information out to the right people at the right time.
And it's nice that the, when you sign up for the Code Red and some of that, you're automatically reporting which zone you're in and all those sorts of things, but also important for people that have been used to seeing the thing that says from Trinity Dam Boulevard to such and such. They need to know now what the zones are. So they really do need to pay attention, figure out what zone they're in. And it's great that you're making it so accessible with the QR codes and emails and Facebooks and so forth. So I appreciate that.
Yeah. And a couple of years ago, these mailers went out to everybody, RCD had these, this was through a grant from CalFire, but these went out to every address in Trinity County, and it literally said, you know, it had whatever the address it went to, it had their their zone listed on it. We have found that some people didn't receive these because they were renters, and whoever has, you know, it's supposed to go to every mailbox, but some people didn't get them. It may have gone to the landowner. So the fire departments have an extra set of these, several sets of these. All your little community fire departments have these. So if you didn't receive an evacuation route and zone, you can get the original one. I am working with RCD right now. Once we get through this program with the evacuation plans, I'm sorry, not the evacuation plan, the evacuation routes. We're going to create new flyers that are also going to have that information on it. So they'll be updated. I'm hoping to get these out, you know, in the near future before we really step into fire season this year. So something else to look forward to, and I'll definitely keep the board posted on our success on that.
Appreciate the update and all the links and information as well. It's one of the things that we were looking at in using these board presentation time slots, if you will, is to be thoughtful about what's important from a timing standpoint. And so as we enter wildfire season, and as you said, it's already around us. It's great for us to kind of be reminded, and even here, there were some new things for me, and I thought I was already up to speed on them. So thank you.
Yeah, I keep a little bit in my pocket.
John, did you have something you thought we needed to know?
The zones are more for the dispatcher, right? That way they know where to call.
Well, the zones are not only for the dispatcher, but for the residents, but yeah, it does. Yes. Yeah, it's a dispatcher, and it's going to be based on the Sheriff's Department, on how much of an area do they want to evacuate? Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You bet. Thank you very much.
Okay, our next presentation, under Clerk of the Board, receive a presentation from Humboldt Skate Park Collective regarding a skate park project in Weaverville Loudoun Park.
Good morning. Thanks for this opportunity. The Humboldt Skate Park Collective representative is not here today. I thought he was going to be here. Charlie Caldwell, I'm not sure if he got stuck in road construction or what. But anyways, my name is Jerry Taggart, and I've been a longtime Trinity County resident. We first moved to the area in 89. And my dad started working at the road department as an engineer, and I'm a graduate of Trinity High 1990. My native ancestry is Wileaki from Southern Trinity, so it's not too much of an exaggeration to say that Trinity County's in my blood. I was a skater kid from Yucaya, California throughout the 80s. In the 90s, the 90s, my focus switched to surfing until I had a family in 2000. I have three boys who grew up here in Weaverville, attending both Weaverville Elementary and Douglas City Elementary. And two of my sons have graduated from Trinity High School, and my youngest son was homeschooled since the pandemic and recently finished his GED. I've been a carpenter for 35 years. I joined the carpenters' union in 2001 and started doing primarily concrete work for different shops. For the past 16 years, I've worked for Mercer Fraser Company in Fortuna, and I travel all over California for work. Was happy to work locally on the Stewart's Fork and Covington Mill Bridges in two thousand and eight, and I recently built a new fire hall in Trinity Center. Past two years, I've reconnected with old friends in the skateboarding world and made a ton of new friends in this community and many who are in the industry and who work behind the scenes to put skate parks together. I was introduced to Charlie Caldwell with the Humboldt Skate Park Collective, uh, last year, and with the help of his nonprofit, we've put together a local team called Skate Trinity. We have monthly meetings and we're excited to take this to the next step. As many are aware, there has been at least one effort to build a skate park here and our efforts are building off of that. I'm hoping as an older skateboarder who's passionate about this, I can use my construction and skateboard experience to bring energy and awareness and funding to help make this happen. I really appreciate, uh, several of you in front of me have helped me with some corrections and some guidance along this process and forgive my inexperience. Do you have the presentation that we can use? Because I thought Charlie was going to have that up on, oh, it's already there. Sorry. Excuse me. Yeah, very good. So this, uh, so this, the page one was just an overall visual. We we've passed that, but just some types of parks that we can look at and and see for just an example of what we can build that page there. Yeah. It's really endless what we can do with this and it's going to be quite a process for us to design this locally, but the two main functions of the skating world are transition and street. And so something, uh, transition is anything that has a radius in it, like like in the lower left hand corner there. And the street elements are probably like in the upper right central with stairs and rails and stuff like that, but a lot of us older guys like the transition because we don't have to push as much. Younger kids like the street element, so we'll we'll design something that has a little bit of both. And we can, uh, we'll focus on some unique features because that really draws people from out of the area to to the community, but moving on, um, on page two, yeah, thank you. The Humboldt Skate Park, uh, Skate Collective mission, um, has some, uh, their mission statement there. It says, uh, to enhance this community. Since I've started skating again, I've been really impressed with the whole community. Every town I visited and skated in from the Bay Area to Central Washington, I've met mutual friends and acquaintances who have amazed me with the positive vibe. I wasn't there when I was a kid in the eighties. Skating was really kind of a rebel sport, rebel activity. Anarchy was a common theme. But nowadays, that's not the case. Everybody's super inclusive and super positive from little kids to old guys like myself. It's really amazing. It's just something that every community needs and a lot of communities already have. And, uh, I just am really impressed by this collective essence of just positivity and, uh, and it's it's not as safe, excuse me, it's not as dangerous as a lot of people think. That was a faux pas. Skateboarding has a reputation of being a dangerous sport, but as you'll see on the graph on page six, which we'll get to in a minute. Um, national statistics show that skateboarding is slightly more dangerous than walking, according to emergency room reporting. So uh, in in the sense of being a dangerous activity, it's just, uh, it's just not that dangerous. People, uh, I'm getting lost in the weeds here, but, um, I wrote down here, somebody in their fifties, I can testify that this sport unites people from toddlers to grandparents. Skateboarding is now an Olympic sport, making its debut in the twenty twenty Olympics in Tokyo. So it's come a long way since the early fifties when it became popular. Uh, it's a very diverse thing. It's pretty cheap to start with. Skaters span all walks of life. Skateboarding is blind to economic status. It's blind to color, politics, age, gender, and it and it just completely, absolutely promotes individuality. It's really incredible to see people coming together inside these fences at these skate parks to help one another come over, overcome adversity. And a thing that's really been happening in the last, probably last five or six years is the girls, the females in this sport are just absolutely blowing it up and it's it's really cool to see. And it's a long time coming. Uh, the economic impact of this stuff, since I started skating again, I've seen communities come together for events like Skate Night in Covelo, Shred Fest in Leightonville, contests in Eureka, Skate Camps in McKinleyville. Um, we recently had a barbecue in, uh, Hay Fork. And it's really, really cool how people get together to to support their, these local movements and, uh, overall, uh, the, I wish I knew more how to to say how, how, um, how these things really bring communities together. Um, there's a point that they have on regional tourism. And, uh, since I've traveled a lot for work, I thought that maybe I was the only one that went to all these different skate parks, but seems like everywhere I go, there's skaters talking about this park and that park and going to this park and going to that park and I just really feel like if we had a park here in town, there there would be people that come to it. The old Field of Dreams movie says, build it and they will come, and it's definitely true. So, uh, I spoke briefly about unique features and that that's going to be something that we incorporate in our design. On page three, it's a little bit more about the Humboldt Skate Park Collective. See, that's the, yeah, okay, you're already there. Sorry. These guys are very involved, primarily in Humboldt County, of course, but they've got fourteen different projects going. They're very, uh, busy working with different communities to make this happen from, uh, Garberville to Delnor County and then us as well. And, uh, they've really know how to get this stuff done. On page four, we ask the question, why? And in my opinion, it's it's the right time. It's an easy question to answer. Skate parks are popping up everywhere. Since the resurgence of skate parks in the early nineties, people and communities have realized the benefits outweigh the cost. Park usage is up. Tourism increases. Collaborations with local businesses help build local economies. Local parents are begging for more activities outside. Teens and parents are excited for more individual activities. Skate parks are safer than think. Uh, there's a statistic out there that shows that ninety eight percent of fatalities in skating involve a vehicle collision. So if we can get the kids off the streets and into parks, it becomes even way more safer. The physical and mental challenges of skating are vital to our developing youth. At any skate park you go to, you'll see skaters attempting tricks over and over and over again until they get it. And it's really quite a thing to, uh, to recognize that commitment and discipline. Uh, Dr. Jordan Peterson is a clinical psychologist and author from Canada. In his book, uh, Twelve Rules for Life, he has a portion about kids and skating and how important discipline is to their development. And I recommend you can find that commentary on YouTube. I'm probably not doing him justice, but on page five, the two thousand and fifteen study shows that nearly thirty percent of quote unquote high use parks involve skate parks. So again, just in terms of of our community versus other communities, it's it's time that we that we do this and and I'm excited to be a part of it. On page six, we talked briefly about skating being safer. But we go in a little more depth here that, uh, one of the reasons possibly is that skating is a little more uh, safer in terms of emergency room reporting is that there is a culture of toughness. You kind of got to pay to play and and scrapes and bruises are part of life and that's just the way it is, but there is an element of of, uh, a skating that encourages that and encourages just pushing through any challenges that you might have, whether they're physical, mental, et cetera, injuries to, uh, to make it happen. And, uh, another really great thing about skateboarding, from my perspective, I'm a, I'm a fan of teen sports. I love baseball. I'm a big Giants fan, but there's something about individual activities that allow personal growth. And you can really see that in skate parks. If you go and watch the kids, it's amazing. So it's really cool. On page seven, we, uh, we have a little thing about maintenance here. Already in this community, I've heard several people ask me about maintaining the park. And so from my own experience, the skaters do it themselves. I always carry a leaf blower with me in my truck because it makes our experience better. So maybe not everybody has a leaf blower to carry around with them, but, um, I can really say that the maintenance itself is probably going to be pretty well taken care of by the skaters. I did have a note here. The concrete itself is usually very durable, of course, uh, lasts long, long time. Many parks are already twenty plus years old and there's just very little to do. There's hardly any maintenance. So, uh, there was been some talk about maybe creating some kind of a local committee to help with that because we wouldn't want to, uh, put that on the park exclusively. Because they already have their hands full as it is. So we'll be open to ideas and suggestions on that as well. And, uh, on the last page, page, or not the last page, but page eight, I just, I would like to, uh, just encourage everybody to support and follow our movements. With the county's approval, we can begin working on a design and writing grant requests. We do have a memorandum of understanding in the works. We've drafted one. And I understand this takes a little bit of time for legal counsel and everything to look at it and review it, but, uh, but we we're we're excited to, uh, to take the next steps and move forward and we'd appreciate any support, financial or otherwise that we can get. And, um, on page nine, just to show you where we're thinking. At the park, let's see, I don't have a pointer, but in the right there where it says, uh, Washington Street, right underneath the nine thirty seven AM, there's a little section of that area of the park across from the covered picnic area. It's approximately, yeah, you you got, you got a little bit further north, up, 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 right in that area, right there where the cursor is on the screen. The park has suggested we use about a hundred by a hundred, uh, about ten thousand square feet of that property right there for the usage, which would suit our needs very, very well. There's a little bit of slope to it, which helps us on our design. Uh, they do have plans to put in at some point a dog park and a basketball court nearby, but not in that general area. So I don't think we'll be stepping on anybody's toes. So that's pretty cool. And then the last page, page ten, the potential scope. So these these parks are expensive. Um, these numbers that we're looking at two hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand are based on what they were doing over McKinleyville recently. And so, uh, it it just depends on the design availability, how much we can do as volunteer efforts, how much has to be done by the general contractors. So it's a hard number to put together, but it's going to be expensive. It's going to be a hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollars. So we really would like to get started on raising funds. We understand the county doesn't have any money for these type of of, uh, of, of programs. So anything we can do with, uh, federal grants, state grants, county grants, community development grants, we'll be looking into all of that, but if we can get the, uh, if if we can get the board's approval and the county's general, go ahead, we're we're excited to to take the next step. So it's about all I had for you, other than I'd just like to say, uh, we're on social media, Facebook and Instagram is the Trinity Skate Park Project, Trinity underscore skate park underscore project. And, uh, thank you for your time. If there's any questions, I'm I'm happy to answer.
Any questions?
Well, I just want to say thank you for about thirty years ago, there was an individual in the community who rose up to say, I really want to see a place in Loudoun Park where the children can play and there's this to climb on and um, had a vision for the little handprints that you see over there and really wanted some equipment that was expensive. And, um, she gathered a team around her, much like I see you doing at these beginning stages and that dream became a reality and children have enjoyed that for decades. And it looks like we're sitting here at the inception of what we're going to look back on, you know, decades from now and say, do you remember when Mr. Tiger had a dream and and pulled some people together and, um, I love that you're looking not only at the tourism and economic development, which definitely makes our, you know, eyes brighten. Um, but you're looking at the individual, what this does for children. And I've also learned about myself, another thing yet this morning, apparently I'm a rebel. I did skate in the eighties.
Nice.
Didn't realize that stigma was around it. I just thought it was a lot of fun. And so thank you for your positivity and, um, just all of the energy that you're bringing forward. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I would, uh, just one thing I would encourage you is, um, if you don't already have the contacts of our various chamber leaders, uh, because we have, uh, several chambers around the county and and they've then have a lot of connections through their organizations and such. So that might be a great source and to make them aware. Uh, they also have access to funds that have been provided by the county for supportive tourism and such. Um, so they may be able to help you, uh, in some way with that as well.
I really appreciate that. I've I've learned so much since I started doing this and there's so much to learn yet still, but I appreciate the heads up. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is public comment. This time is for information from the public on matters not appearing on this agenda or within the consent calendar. All comments are limited to three minutes and must pertain to matters within the jurisdiction of this board. When addressing the board, please state your name for the record and address the board as a whole through the chair. No action or discussion will be conducted on matters not listed on the agenda. However, the chair may refer the subject matter to the appropriate department for follow-up or schedule the matter on a subsequent board agenda. Do we have any public comment in the room?
My name's Tyler Crow. I'm a skateboarder from Hay Fork. I know you said it wasn't on, had to not be on the agenda. I just wanted to give my support. I'm here as support for the Trinity Skate Park Project. So many communities have them nowadays. They're really integral for for parks and for community development. So I just wanted to give my support to that.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Well, oh, more? Okay, please. Oh, yes, please.
Liza Wozneski, Junction City. I'd also like to show my support for the skate park. Uh, my twin boys are nine. And currently we have to drive all the way to Redding to skate on concrete. As you know, there's not a lot of concrete around here. We have a seven and a half acres with minimal sidewalks. So I would also like to show my support. I've joined the group as well to help raise funds and get the movement going. Thank you.
Thank you. Online, Ashley?
I have no race fans.
Okay, well, thank you for your support of that project. I'm sure Jerry appreciated that and we'll try to, uh, keep supporting your efforts to make something happen. It's the, as as Supervisor Cox mentioned, oftentimes the the meaningful things that happen are because someone just said, I'm going to make this happen and then everybody came around. So thanks for stepping up. Okay, we'll move into reports and announcements. Uh, the first is reports from department heads.
Good morning, Chair, members of the board. Uh, I'll make a a quick, yet important announcement. Uh, I'm sorry, Liz Hamilton, Director of Health and Human Services. Um, I'd like to acknowledge and congratulate Irina Irwin on her promotion to Deputy Director of our agency.
Say, say her name again, I'm sorry.
Irina Irwin.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yeah, so I just wanted to share that and I know she's watching online today. Um, and I'm just looking forward to that partnership in in the immediate right now as we go. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations, Serena. I was just, Supervisor Cox and I were on a PSA two uh, meeting yesterday and and Mike was there and it was nice to see his face again, but uh, he, it didn't take him very long to acknowledge that he had retired. So I'm glad you have someone to work alongside you again. Any others?
I have no race fans.
Okay, uh, next is report from the county administrative officer.
Thank you, Chair. I got a couple of things. So last week, I was able to attend the Trendell Board of Directors meeting in Plumas County, where we worked through some policy and funding type issues, uh, and the full twelve member board, uh, was there uh, and took action and voted on those and then provide some direction to the executive director. You know, overall, those meetings are are very, very good. You have a lot of interaction with your counterparts at the the twelve Trendell Counties, which are very very much like counties to, uh, to Trinity. And it always makes me understand and feel that, you know, we are not that much different than the other counties and the struggles and issues we're working through are very similar to other counties. One big topic of of focus is the, um, the liability in in the jails, uh, and we are experiencing that as well. And upcoming here, uh, later in the month, there is some some specific training that Trendell has put together. And that has been passed out to the appropriate staffs, uh, throughout all the twelve counties. And it is a specific focus on, uh, jails and, uh, the liability associated with those and and those associated operations. Uh, so some good movement in that direction. Uh, also, I participated in the quarterly WIN Act update meeting. This is, this provides the status updates to the Central Valley Project Reconsultation Effort. Uh, and that main meeting took place on June eleventh. Overall progress continues, uh, but it does, is all indications are that there's going to kind of be two tracks to this. One effort is scheduled for completion by the end of One effort is scheduled for completion by the end of twenty twenty four. Uh, and that's the overall Central Valley Project Reconsultation. The cooperating agency, which Trinity County is one of them, that draft EIS has been out and comments have been received. Uh, to the tune of eight hundred and forty-six comments. So the next phase is the public draft EIS. And that period opens in July and runs through August. As part of that period, there will be three in-person meetings, one in Los Banios, one in Redding and one in Sacramento. And then there will be three virtual public meetings uh, as well. The specific dates on those are, are yet to be published, but the Bureau of Reclamation is working through those. Then there's uh, is still the sub-element that is the Trinity River Division Aspect, which is part of the overall CVP, but that element is not scheduled to be, you know, completed. And a potential revised recorded decision or revised biological opinion is not scheduled to be completed until the end of twenty twenty five. So a couple of little different, different tracks there. There's different opinions on why two tracks are being pursued. But that is what the Bureau of Reclamation is doing. Uh, and we are going to remain very engaged in that effort and provide comments as, as appropriate. Which we've already done to date. Next topic is, I'm sure many people are tracking, but the state budget actions are still ongoing. And we should have more clarity on June twenty seventh uh, with that. But again, as I've talked about in here, you know, there is going to be some impact to, to various programs and services that the county provides. But there's just, just still lots of unknowns with that, uh, because there is so much movement. But we should have some more fidelity on that by the end of, end of June. And then just as another public announcement, this has gone out via email a few different times. But uh, on this Thursday, June twentieth, from twelve to two at Loudoun Park, we're doing the, the county employee appreciation picnic. And again, you're, obviously the board has been invited to that. But most of the, the public facing county offices are going to be closed for that period of time. So we can maximize participation. And then we're working out different arrangements to, to get, to get food and items to those uh, who are on shift work and who cannot leave their, their place of duty. But again, twelve to two at Loudoun Park uh, on Thursday. And that's all I've got.
And uh, Trent, I, I believe you, you and Supervisor Goguen are working with the Bureau of Reclamation to get someone to come speak to us at, at some point in the near future.
We, we are. I just exchanged some email dialogue with the Executive Secretary for the Northern Region District Manager yesterday. And they're still working on those specific dates, but they are, they do acknowledge our request and are working to uh, solidify those dates.
Okay, great. And for the board's benefit, uh, I, I did hear from folks at the River Restoration Program, who were offering to come over and do regular updates like the Forest Service does. And so we've just been trying to wait to hear from the very top, if you will, on this and then figure out what schedule might make sense. So if you have input on that, please let me know and then we'll coordinate to get that. Okay, the next item is report from uh, members of the Board of Supervisors. And Supervisor Gogan, if you are ready, we will start with you.
I have no out-of-county travel. I think Trent covered most of it. We had a TMC meeting a couple of weeks back that went pretty, pretty well. We talked about the variable flows a little bit. Um, we're still moving forward with those. And with that said, I think Trent covered the majority of the water and my board stuff in the last two weeks. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Supervisor Frazier?
Gee, I have to. I, I went to a meeting in Calusa on uh, my calendar, the day after our last board meeting, I believe it was the fifth. Yeah, the fifth, I went to CGT cap meeting. That's a meeting that I, or a committee I do believe we need to look at at our next meeting. Supervisor Gogan is the second primary on that and hasn't been able to attend a meeting. So I think that that's something we need to uh, address. We need to have someone else take that position, uh, because I will only be there for a certain number of more meetings. And it would be nice if there wasn't an absolute um, turnover in that board. We, we have six people, six voting members from Trinity County that are on the board. And generally only three in attendance. So um, I would like to get that on the agenda to, to have another primary um, put onto the CGT cap board. If Supervisor Gogan's not going to be able to make those meetings, which I know the last one, he had a TMC meeting. So um, but it is something that needs to be done. And.
Provide the schedule and regularity of a monthly?
Um, six meetings a year. And it's, the next one will be in next month, I believe, in Leaverville this time. So the next one will be an easy one. They're generally in um, Calusa. There's two a year in Calusa County, two a year in Glen County, one in Redding and one in Leaverville.
Ask the Chair and see if council will advise. We don't have a meeting of the board on the second of July, so our next meeting is the sixteenth of July. And if that um, impedes our ability to get somebody placed on there to make that meeting, is that um, something that can be considered an urgency item?
The next meeting would be on July twenty fourth.
Oh, so we would make it.
We'll be able to do it.
So the, the reason I haven't made the majority of, of meetings is it is in direct conflict with the two-day TMC meeting generally. And the TMC monthly call most of the time.
Yeah, so we, we need to.
It's a very hard one for me to make. It's almost impossible for me to make. And, and I took it before I really realized the dates that TMC would be locked into, uh, and myself. So yeah.
I'm, I think we, we do need to, there's a scheduling conflict. We need to, we need to change if somebody else is available, so.
So Ashley, if you'll just make sure that that's on our next agenda and we'll make sure we take care of it before the next meeting.
Perfect.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Uh, I think that's all I had.
Okay, Supervisor Cox?
Okay, uh, yesterday Supervisor Lou Wiler and I, as he mentioned, were on a PSA two meeting. A couple of things that um, matter to the community would be that Dignity Health Connected Living um, is now in need of a new location to act as a hub. When meals are delivered for our seniors to town, the Nazarene Church will no longer be acting as that hub after, I believe, the twenty-fourth of this month. There are a couple of locations that are being considered. And so um, just want to make sure that if one of those doesn't work out, I think I have one maybe hanging in the background that could. So we're just, are working diligently to be sure that we don't have any interruption in that service. And then we uh, honored our Advisory Council members yesterday, which was uh, why we got to see Mike Katani on our meeting and appreciate his service there. Many others. So Trinity has had a couple of vacant seats. And uh, it's important that those get filled and we do have two folks who have their applications in and are pending approval. So that's good news. Uh, so uh, CAO, Ted Hill and I were on a meeting with Butte County, just referring to uh, the collaboration with other counties. And um, that help and interaction is always so appreciated, the relationships that we have built with others. Um, is um, is such an encouragement and really does give us guidance and direction. We met with CAO uh, and a supervisor from Butte County, looking at some possible funding options for the county, which um, may or may not work out, but um, it's just encouraging to know we're seeking out ideas and looking to the future to see what things we might uh, work more efficiently for better outcomes. I did miss the Fire Chiefs meeting as Supervisor Lou Wiler had to as well. Um, in lieu of an opportunity to testify before an Assembly Committee in Sacramento regarding Senate Bill eight twenty. And that was a really positive and um, eye-opening, uh, fun learning experience. It had a positive outcome, which was exciting and um, just nice to be able to engage with um, senators we don't normally. So um, that was my out-of-county travel and that is the end of my report.
Thank you. And uh, just to clarify on your dignity health, uh, if I'm remembering right from the conversation, they're, they're looking for a place where the meals can be delivered and then picked up by the people that will actually deliver them out to individuals. Am I understanding that correctly? So it's just like a place to come to, to deliver them and then get them distributed?
Correct. It's just a location, about six tables set up, just at a routine basis. And it really just is a, a site that acts as a hub. No other workers are um, needed. Uh, those people are all still in place.
Great, thank you. All right, uh, building on, on that a little bit, uh, we did talk about a number of things, as you might imagine, in board meetings. But uh, one of them that stood out to me was next month is Elder Abuse Awareness Month. And uh, I was, I'll just say shocked when I heard the numbers of confirmed reports of elder abuse in the various counties that are participating in this particular agency. And our numbers for Trinity County for last year was a hundred and eighty-eight. Now, you could say that's way less than Shasta, which was over thirty-five hundred, but still it's a hundred and eighty-eight instances of confirmed elder abuse in the county. So uh, their efforts continue to, to work on training and to work on awareness and um, resources, all those sorts of things. But it was, it was, you know, sometimes you wonder about these awareness proclamations and does it make a difference? And well, here, you know, really hopefully can make a difference, so. It can be troubling, but it can also be encouraging to see the people as Supervisor Cox was able as Chair to comment about the, the heart and the work of these people that work on these things. And they are so completely invested in making a difference, so it's encouraging. Uh, California Jobs First, uh, that group, uh, which I know we've heard this mentioned many, many times and always seems to be slow-moving. But uh, we have finalized the rubric for selecting projects for funding. And all the people that submitted projects when that portal was open uh, for consideration of funding have now been notified about this new rubric, the set of criteria that will be used to choose those projects that get funded. And they have until June twenty eighth to respond with any sorts of updates. Um, basically saying, okay, we're going to be looking at this kind of criteria. If what you submitted didn't address that, then here's your chance to modify. So uh, it's exciting that we're finally getting there. It's a little nerve-wracking. I'm, I'm still not fully aware of how many projects got uh, submitted for Trinity County. But I'll be seeing that soon as part of the review committee. So I'm hopeful that our partners around the county have um, working on their ideas. Uh, that money is decisions about awarding that money, which will be planning money. This is to take the project ideas and flesh them out. It would be like if it was the skate park had been one of them that got submitted. It would be all of the planning associated with that would be covered by one of these grants or, you know, the funding. And then next year, we'll be looking at implementation funding. So uh, it's in August, we'll finally have some word on which projects will be moving forward in California or in Trinity County. And I think I mentioned in the last meeting, but just to confirm, um, there is a stated goal that every county in the region uh, will be receiving a, a project, the funding for a project and be impacted positively by at least one project. And there is also a goal that seventy percent of the overall funds will go to, quote, underserved communities, of which Trinity County falls in. So there's a good chance for us to get some funding. Uh, attended the U.S. Forest Service Partners BBQ. We were at the Veterans Hall and that room was completely packed with people that are working as, in partnership with the Forest Service to help make a difference in our forests all around the county. And it was just really encouraging to see that kind of turnout. And then to hear the conversations and the presentations about the kind of work that's going on as a result of those partnerships. AT&amp;T uh, carrier of last resort. We do actually have something that is been added to the agenda as an urgency item. Uh, both Supervisor Cox and I were notified by our various groups, Supervisor Cox through RCRC, which is rural counties. And, and uh, me, actually I got notified by AT&amp;T. They were reaching out, asking for my support of what they were doing. And uh, I reached out to CSAC, which is the county or the statewide group. Um, and thankfully RCRC was uh, quick on the draw and got us uh, something that we could use. And so that's on the agenda for later today. But basically AT&amp;T kind of lost their bid with the Public Utilities Commission. And so now they're making a push for a different way of at least partially getting out of those commitments. So we're, we're going to be addressing that later. Uh, on insurance matters, on June thirteenth, the Insurance Commissioner Ricardo Lara released further details about uh, his plans to increase writing of homeowners and commercial insurance policies in areas of the state with high wildfire risk. And they put out a map that showed those parts of the state where there's a high density of uh, fare plan uh, coverage. And as you might expect, Trinity County was absolutely colored in that category. And so this is, again, this is a long process, but it is encouraging to me to keep hearing that there are steps being taken. And uh, it is being addressed. And, and I think we mentioned last time, there is a uh, working group that is specifically focused on this area that, that both Supervisor Cox and I were able to attend the last time they met. And I think they're meeting, is it monthly or every other month?
It's Thursday again.
It's Thursday again, okay. Okay, and that is my update. And we will now, uh, reports from ad hocs. Uh, we only have one, which is Tribal Relations. And Supervisor Carpenter Harris is, I know is prepared to provide an update uh, when she gets here. So at some point, um, when she does get here, we'll maybe have her just kind of slip that back in, just so we have an update on what's going on there. With that, we'll move to consent calendar. These items include routine, non-controversial matters and will be acted upon by the board by one roll call motion. If a member of the public has any questions or comments on an item on the consent calendar, they may provide them now. A member of the board or staff may request an item be pulled and considered separately. So I will um, open to public comment about the consent calendar. Any in the room? Any online?
No raised hands.
Did any, uh, did any of you have something that you wanted to move off the consent calendar for discussion? No, I will entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
Okay.
You don't want to go now, I'm sort of fishing.
Frazier Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Frazier?
Uh, Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Cox?
Aye. I'm Supervisor, Chairman Lou Wiler.
Aye, and Supervisor Gogan, if you could re-mute your mic, that, that would help. It was coming through a little bit beforehand. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving along, under county matters. These items include non-routine or controversial matters and are listed alphabetically by department. A member of the board, staff or public may request that an item be heard out of order. And the first item is under County Administrative Office. Adopt a resolution which adopts a preliminary budget for fiscal year twenty-four twenty-five, sixty-four million, eight hundred eighty-six thousand, eight hundred and fifty-four dollars.
Chair, I'll, I'll start this one. I don't, Suzie may be online, but um, I can talk through this one. So each year we, you know, present a preliminary budget at this time. And then that is the authority the county has to continue county operations until we adopt the final budget, no later than two October of, of that fiscal year or, or the, the, yeah, two October this year is, is the way that that lines up. So in the, we've done it, we're doing it a little bit different uh, this year than we have done in the past. Uh, in the past, we have just brought forth for board consideration the full department head proposed budgets that they had submitted without any real review or without, without any real analysis of it. We just brought that full amount to the board. And then between that time and when the full budget, or when the budget was, the final budget was adopted, there was budget hearings. We did the budget cuts. We did, went through all that whole process. This year, I have proposed that we, we are bringing forward basically a forty percent uh, of the requested budgets to get us through that first uh, three months really of the new fiscal year. We have quite a bit of work to do to reduce the amount of requested budgets from department heads. And I didn't think it. And I didn't think it was necessarily, you know, appropriate to bring forth a very large budget request that we know we're not going to be able to fulfill. So we basically went with the, the 40% of, uh, you know, known expenditures that we would have for this first quarter of the fiscal year. There are some other items in there that we know we have full bills that are being incurred at the very beginning of the fiscal year in July. Uh, and we've also included those in there. And then there are some capital projects, um, that again, we, we know we have funds for those. Uh, and those are going to, those costs will be incurred at some form or fashion in that first quarter of the fiscal year. So those are also included in there. So that's what gets you up to about that 40% uh, range. Now between now and the first of October, you know, we're obviously going to have many budget hearings with the department heads. We'll have some discussions here in this room, uh, and then we will adopt that final budget on or before the second of Oc- of October. We do have about an $8 million, uh, you know, differs between what the overall request of, of department heads and what we think we're going to have for budget for fiscal year 2425. Uh, so we do have some work to do, uh, and there will be some hard decisions that will need to be made. But, uh, you know, with the, the cooperation and understanding of, of departments and staff, I, I do believe we can, we can get there, uh, and, and we, you know, we, we have to get there. So we will get there. Uh, so with that all, uh, I know Suzie's walked in, uh, we can entertain, you know, questions and, and go from there.
I do need some clarity. I read in the staff report that it says preliminary budget of, for fiscal year 2425 is based on 40% of the department's adopted budget from 2324. But I felt like I heard you just say 40% of the requested budget.
If, if I did say that, I misstated that. It's, it's 40% of their, their last year's operating budget, basically.
Great. Thanks.
Any other? I, I think the only thing I had, uh, Trent was well, since it is just based on last year, that then it, it isn't a concern. I was thinking if it was based on the requested, which I was hearing too, then, um, those could have included additional headcount or something. And so we're, those kinds of things will just be held in place until we're reviewing the fall, uh, final budget proposal.
Correct, correct. Uh, the, this, the second full week of July, we have, you know, that whole week is, is budget hearings with departments. And we're going to work through all those details, uh, as we do every year.
Okay. Uh, absent any other questions, we will go to public comment. Any in the room? Any online?
I have no raised hands.
Okay. That I will entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve.
Well, second.
Supervisor Fraser?
Hi.
Supervisor Cox?
Hi.
Supervisor Gogan?
Hi.
Chairman Luke Wyler?
Hi. Thank you. And thank you for the work. I know that we spent all of about 47 seconds on that, uh, Suzie and Trent, but I know that there's been days and weeks of work, uh, being done to get us to where we need to be in this time and, uh, look forward to the fall. I know, as you said, there's going to be some tough choices to make along the way when you talk about uh, requests for funding that are $8 million over anticipated revenues. Okay, uh, item, next item, uh, clerk recorder assessor elections. Approve a budget adjustment for fiscal year 2324 for Assessor Department 1400. Increasing intra-fund expenses by $56,629. And approve a budget adjustment for fiscal year 2324 for general fund contingency, Department 9901. Decreasing appropriations for contingency by $56,629. Fiscal impact is an increase in general fund appropriations in the amount of $56,579. The current balance in the general fund contingency is $214,618. Who's going to speak? Oh, there you are.
Good morning. Um, so this, I, you know, I, I felt like I wrote a pretty good story in my, um, staff report. But just to elaborate a little bit more is, is when I was preparing my, um, 2324 budget, I didn't take into consideration, there was this litigation out there. So therefore I, I budgeted zero for these costs. Um, it is in an appeal process right now. And so I did put money in the 2425, uh, budget for this. So hopefully we don't have to do this again next year.
Okay, any, uh, questions? All right, any public comment in the room? Online?
I have no raised hands.
Okay. That I will entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve E2 as presented.
I'll second.
Supervisor Cox?
Hi.
Supervisor Fraser?
Hi.
Supervisor Gogan?
Hi.
Chairman Luke Wyler?
Hi. Thank you. All right, next item under human resources, adopt a policy regarding animals in the workplace, no fiscal impact.
Good morning, board and, um, chairman. I'm presenting for the Human Resources Department, uh, Leila Kasey, uh, director of. And, um, we are creating this policy as, um, it says in the staff report. Follow up to many other policies, um, and finally landing on something that also, uh, incorporates state law, federal law. Um, we had several people try, wanting to bring in their pets. Um, lots of people with allergies, uh, and other aversions, let's just say. Uh, and so decided it was necessary to actually write a policy and put it in place. Because people weren't, you know, following, uh, what made sense. So, uh, this is what we're presenting and we, if you have any questions, I'm here to answer.
All right, any questions from the board? Any, um, public comment in the room? Online?
I have no raised hands.
Entertain a motion?
I will move approval of the policy.
I'll second, I guess.
Supervisor Fraser?
Hi.
Supervisor Cox?
Hi.
Supervisor Gogan?
Hi.
Chairman Luke Wyler?
Hi. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next item, human resources, adopt an HR policy creating a tuition reimbursement program. And the fiscal impact is dependent upon tuition reimbursement usage.
Good morning again. Um, this is something the board and I, actually in a couple of other members of the, um, negotiation committee had discussed, um, earlier, well, in the middle of last year. And I'm finally bringing it to the board. I think it looks like what you guys were intending. But definitely if you have questions, I can answer those.
Any questions? Uh, the, one question I don't remember from looking at materials, um, is the, is there any limitation on the kinds of, uh, tuition that is reimbursed? Does it have to be, some places have it, but it has to be related to their role?
Uh, it does, yeah.
Okay. And the amount is up to $2,000 in a, is it a fiscal year? Okay. All right. Um, that, any public comment in the room? Any online?
I have no raised hands.
I will entertain a motion.
I would just say before entertaining the motion, I, I appreciated, uh, item five that you included. The courses must be directly related to the employer's current job responsibilities. Align with the county's strategic goals or follow a career path within the county that the employee is interested in pursuing. I just, I really appreciated the win-win there. It's good for the county. It's good for the employee. It's very thoughtful. It's planned. It has foresight and really moves a person into a space that will be so good for their, um, their career goals.
So I'm, I'm looking to try and retain as much as possible, even if we have to move to different departments. I, I'm trying to make sure that people understand we're here to make it work rather than have to, you know, part ways.
Absolutely. Indeed. Again, I think just for the public's awareness, there's a requirement that the employee then continue to work for the county for two-year period following payment of those fees. So really good. Appreciate that. That I move to approve.
In a little second.
Supervisor Fraser?
Hi.
Supervisor Cox?
Hi.
Supervisor Gogan?
Hi.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris? You ready for that one? Okay. Chairman Luke Wyler?
Hi. Thank you. And thank you for pulling that together. I think it's great that we finally have this in place.
Thank you.
Uh, I, I'm, five is also human resources. Modify health and human services allocation list to combine the nine flexibly staffed allocations for staff services analyst 123 with the five flexibly staffed allocations for supervising staff services analyst and staff services manager to have 14 allocations to be flexibly staffed with staff services analyst 123 supervising staff analyst and staff services manager. That is a mouthful.
It is. Uh, I tried to reduce it as much as I could. Um, basically no additions to staff, no changes in titles. All we're doing is making both flexibly staffed. There's several positions in each flexibly staff thing. We're just combining them all. Because with the different types of people that we have working in different positions, sometimes they need more oversight, sometimes they need less. And why waste the positions and not have what we need? Um, and this allows us to staff it appropriately to the, the people that we have at the time in the department. If that makes sense. Any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions?
And Liz is here too, if you want to ask her.
Thank you. All right, no questions then. Open to public comment in the room? And online?
I have no raised hands.
All right, that I will entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve as presented.
I'll second.
Supervisor Cox?
Hi.
Supervisor Fraser?
Hi.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Hi.
Supervisor Gogan?
Hi.
Chairman Luke Wyler?
Hi. Thank you both. Item six, Trinity County Transportation Commission. Adopt a resolution that finds there are no unmet transit needs that are reasonable to meet in Trinity County. No fiscal impact.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, this is Sarah Saad, um, transportation planner for Trinity DOT as well as the commission. And I'll be addressing this item this morning.
Thank you.
Um, so good morning supervisors. Thank you for taking the time to address this item. Um, if it's okay with you, I'd like to just briefly explain the unmet transit needs process since there was a little confusion.
Thank you.
Um, okay, so the commission is annually responsible to take care of the unmet transit needs process. And this process has four key elements. One is public outreach and public comment. The second would be consulting with the social services, transportation, uh, social services, transportation advisory council. The third is adopting, um, definitions for unmet transit need and reasonable to meet. And the fourth is the final resolution, which is being presented today. So for the public comment and public outreach, um, various methods were through the newspaper, um, Facebook, websites, and as well as flyers on the buses. Um, were put out to gain some public comment and outreach and let everyone know that the process is, um, going on. Um, the second part for the social services transportation advisory council or the STAC, um, staff did meet with the STAC and it was open, um, to the public as well. Um, the third for the definitions, the definitions were, um, for unmet transit needs and reasonable to meet were approved by the commission on May 7th. Um, and then for today's, um, resolution, staff is recommending, uh, the commission to adopt that there is no unmet transit need, needs that are reasonable to meet in the county. So for this final resolution, there are three options. There's no unmet transit needs. There are unmet transit needs that are reasonable to meet. And then there are unmet transit needs that are, um, sorry, that are reasonable to me and some that are not reasonable to me. So today, the reason why staff is recommending that there are no unmet transit needs that are reasonable to meet is because, um, the comments that we received do not meet the definition of reasonable to me. So, um, we did receive, sorry, I'm trying to pull it up right now. Um, we did receive a total of six public comments for this process. Four of these comments were received via email. One was received, um, at the STAC meeting and one was, was received at the public hearing on May 21st. All of these comments were regarding a dial ride paratransit service. So that being said, uh, I'll just go through some of the staff responses and recommendations. And if you have any questions, you can just stop me and, um, I'll answer what I can for you. Um, so the first is that, um, the Golden Age Center in Weaverville does offer a paratransit service. They operate in Weaverville, Junction City, Douglas City, Lewiston and Reading. Um, and then the Rogers Senior Center in Hayfork, um, does the dial ride paratransit services, but only in Hayfork. Um, and as well as, um, staff is, you know, really pushing and willing to help these senior centers apply for the Federal Transit Administration 5310 program. This is for specialized transportation that can, um, give grants to the senior centers so that they can, um, have more funding for paratransit services and other operations that, um, is needed in the community. Um, at this time, um, we also still have our, um, transportation assistance program with the Human Response Network. And this is a, um, service that is being fully utilized every year that we have it. Um, a lot of people are getting fuel reimbursements, um, gas vouchers and are able to drive to Reading for social services and medical appointments. And, um, it is a very great program and the count, residents of the county are utilizing it to the fullest extent and it's, um, working very well. Um, as well as, um, Trinity Transit, although it's a fixed, um, schedule fixed operations, we also, um, offer a deviated fix route, which means that if it is someone like, um, someone who's a senior or someone of limited means, they are able to, the driver is able to deviate three-fourths of a mile away from any bus stop in order to get them closer to their destination to make it easier for them. So that's already included within Trinity Transit's, um, regular service. And then, um, finally I just want to talk about our short range transit development plan. So our SRTDP, um, covers 20, our current one covers 2020 to 21 all the way through 2425. So it's still current as of now. In this plan, um, consultants did look at what paratransit would look like with Trinity Transit. And they did, did deem it that it would not be financially feasible for Trinity Transit to operate. That is because it would, um, we would need an additional allocation for a driver. As well as if you're looking at Trinity County, it's very different from other counties that, you know, have these services. Everything is super dispersed geographically. So if you're looking at someone from Trinity Center or Southern Trinity who, you know, might take an hour and a half maybe to get to them and take them all the way to Reading and back. You know, it's much different than if everything was together. This is, you know, traveling a long way for a little, a lot of operational expense because of how geographically dispersed the county is versus how much revenue the operation will receive. So, um, for the definitions that were adopted, um, last month, one of the, um, sections for reasonable to meet is cost effectiveness. And this looks at sufficient ridership and revenue for any new or expanded services. Um, at this moment, there is no sufficient ridership and no revenue that we can say would be sufficient for, for having a paratransit service. And again, that information is all in our current short range transit development plan. And if you look at, um, also in the definition of reasonable to meet, there's the financial feasibility again. Um, and in this, it it's also mentioning a fare box ratio. So with Trinity Transit, there is a fare box ratio that we are needing to meet, which is ten percent. It's currently still suspended due to COVID, but it should be coming back, um, in twenty-twenty-six. So, and before we can add any additional services, we need to make sure that the revenue compared to the operation costs has a fare box ra- um, ratio of ten percent. So like I said, this paratransit dial ride paratransit service would not bring that fare box ratio. Um, so therefore it doesn't meet the definition of reasonable to meet. Um, as well as, let me just pull this up quickly. Um, so yes, so staff does recognize while additional transportation needs have been identified through this public outreach, um, the needs do not meet the definition of reasonable to meet. Um, and so, yes, that is what staff is recommending. And if you have any questions, um, I can go ahead and answer.
Sarah, would you remind me of your title, please?
Yes, Transportation Planner Two.
Thank you. Uh, any questions?
No.
Okay, uh, I just would comment. Thank you very much, Sarah, for kind of walking through that because I know I was one of those that sort of had confusion because I would often hear every year we say we have no unmet transit needs. And then I would hear in the public, we have lots of unmet transit needs. And so this, you've kind of walked us through how we have to come to that determination, um, to determine not only is it an unmet need, but is it one that is reasonable to meet and even the fare box piece, making sure that there is this percentage of revenues and so forth. So, uh, thank you for that clarification. I I know it helped me at least.
Okay, yeah, no problem. And also just to mention that short range transit plan, where also we did get a grant to, um, renew it for the next years. And that is going to be, um, starting in the fall. So we're definitely going to take these comments into consideration and look at what it looks like now because of course things change. And, um, so we're definitely going to be looking into that. So, um, the process next year will have that information available.
That's great. Thank you for making sure we didn't lose track of that input.
Of course.
Okay, uh, with that, I'll ask for a public comment in the room? And online?
I have no raised hands.
And with that, I will entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve.
I will second.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Frazier?
Aye.
Chairman Luke Wyler?
Aye, thank you. Item seven Trinity County Transportation Commission. Approve an agreement with the Human Response Network to administer the Transportation Assistance Program for Trinity County residents needing transportation assistance. No impact to the general fund, eighty thousand dollars of local transportation funds.
Yes, so this is me again. Um, so first I want to say thank you to Sherry White, Tricia Aberg and the rest of the HRN staff. Um, their service to the community is truly meaningful and they do a great job with it and they're easy to work with and coordinate with and they just want, um, the best for the community. So, um, this agreement or this contract has been renewed for a few years now. And like I said previously, um, the residents of the county are fully using it. Um, they're able to get reimbursed for gas. Um, they're able to get gas vouchers and they're also able to get, um, free Trinity Transit passes through this program. Um, and so far, everything's doing great. It's being used and a lot of people are using it every month to go to, um, medical and social service appointments in Reading. And so staff is recommending to, um, put another agreement for twenty-four, twenty-five. Um, and as well as this, um, agree, this program does help a lot with those, um, unmet transit needs as well. So any questions up here?
No. All right, any public comment in the room? Or online?
I have no raised hands.
I will entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve as presented.
I will second.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
May I make a comment before we vote?
Sure, please do.
I just want to say that this is a, um, this program is, is helpful beyond the ability to just say it with words. I know so many people, um, especially when they're enduring day after day, um, chemotherapy and radiation treatments and those types of treatments that mandate a day after day trip over the hill to Reading. Um, that these types of funds that help people with those transportation needs, um, especially in the senior community and for those who are working so hard to make ends meet, but sometimes they just don't pull all the way together. I'm super grateful that we have the opportunity to, um, be partners in providing this for the citizenry. It's, it's very valuable and I'm greatly, um, appreciative of it.
Thank you.
Okay. Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Supervisor Frazier?
Aye.
Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Chairman Luke Wyler?
Aye.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Sarah. Uh, I'm going to do a closed session report out and then at that time, if you would like to do any sort of supervisor report out or ad hoc, you can do that. Otherwise, don't feel pressured, but you can if you want. Uh, the closed session report out. So this is a report on the closed sessions that took place in the previous meeting. Yes?
I have the urgency item to have cover as well.
Oh, thank you. So I'll, I'll do this and we'll come back to that. Um, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation five four nine five six point nine, case number three two four dash C V dash zero two two one one S L V Trinity County. And direction was provided to staff. And then government code section five four nine five four point five C, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, number of cases, one, having to do with NEPA. And direction was provided to staff. So, um, you're right. Thank you. I did not put something on my agenda for the uh, urgency item. Uh, Supervisor Carpenter Harris, would you like to provide any update for your district and or the ad hoc committee before we do that?
Yes, first I would like to, um, apologize for my tardiness. Just as a note that I guess I'm a human. My husband took my vehicle keys to work with him. And, um, and
Got thrown under the bus.
Yeah, well, he took my vehicle keys to work with him on accident and then I jumped in our old ranch truck to head down the road and um, inadvertently went off into the ditch and ripped the right passenger tire off the rim. Um, now my back hurts really bad and my husband had to leave work and come and bring me the keys and I finally made it through all three traffic stops to arrive here at the time that I did. So, um, I I apologize for that. It was those types of circumstances that I guess just continue to happen to me in my life. I'm not really sure why, but anyway, um, I'm glad I'm here. I do, I don't, I did not have any out accounting travel. I did participate in a, uh, number of meetings that, um, I am, I am happy to participate in, including the TMC. And the North Coast Resource Partnership Group had a meeting. I was not able to attend to attend because of conflicting responsibilities. But I did, um, uh, go through the, the work there and looking at fire risley and sea planning and so forth. And as far as that goes, um, I did, and I do want to let you know that I'm still communicating with, um, both the Sinangway and Naroma tribes um, on and off regarding, uh, as a report for my tribal ad hoc, um, regarding our both tribal efforts to become federally recognized and just communicating and building relationships between them. And I also spent, um, a little bit of time in phone conversations, uh, regarding the, the deep concerns from the tribal folks on the Great Redwood Trail. Um, situation where the track is being converted to trail and it's going to go through a, a known archaeological site and there's deep concern there about greater disruption to that site in the event that that track is turned to trail with off, you know, off trail, um, trespass and different things like that. So that's my report out on that. And otherwise, again, I'm sorry for my tardiness. I'm just glad I made it.
That is a morning.
Amen.
Okay, thank you. And so now if we can, um, move to the item supervisor, supervisor Cox helped get on the agenda. Do we have, do I have that in this printed out?
To vote to put it on the agenda.
Okay, so Supervisor Frazier, you're, you're giving me some guidance on process?
I think we have to vote to put it on the agenda still, don't we? We need a four-fifths vote to actually put it on the agenda.
That is correct. So there needs to be a motion to add it as an emergency item that requires a four-fifths vote. The finding must be made that the information received, uh, that warranted this agenda item was received after the posting the agenda and that the, uh, nature of the action necessitates that it be heard prior to the next agenda. And then with a four-fifths vote, that can be placed. And then subsequently, we will hear that item.
Thank you. So Supervisor Cox, would you like to, um, I guess, state the motion to have it added and then your explanation as to why?
Certainly. So I would move to, uh, have this item added to today's agenda as an urgency item. Because this came to my attention yesterday from our RCRC policy advocate. Um, reminding us that, uh, AT&T was taking another, I'll say stab at the outcome. And that this is moving, uh, both quickly and without, um, there's no calendar that says when this is actually going to come before the next, uh, hearing. And so they need those letters of opposition from us as soon as possible. Because we don't have a board meeting on July second, it would wait all the way to the sixteenth and likely miss uh, the purpose for which they need it. And that I checked with counsel and believe this does constitute an emergency.
Do we have a second?
Um, I'll second that. I just, I think we should explain a little further that what the action we're taking is to send an opposition letter to assembly bill. I have to get the number twenty-seven ninety-seven correct. And that way people know what the action is, but I will second that.
Thank you.
Okay, um, any questions? A public comment in the room? Or online?
I have no raised hands.
Okay. With that, we will entertain.
Well, this is
Already have the motion. Well, we have to vote to get it on.
On, yes.
And then so, okay, so a vote on that motion and then we will actually vote on the item itself.
Supervisor Frazier?
Aye.
Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Chairman Luke Wyler?
Aye. Okay. Now, is this, um, because of the nature of this, is this something that I need to read the letter?
Was it, is it, it will be attached to the documents, um, to the agenda minutes, but it wasn't a deck to the agenda. Yeah, I would read it at this point, thank you, because the public would not have access to it prior.
Okay, let me see if I can find it. Do you have it handy? Um, is it okay if Supervisor Cox reads it?
Absolutely.
That's her item.
It, uh, addresses Assembly Member McKinner. On behalf of Trinity County, we regretfully oppose your assembly bill two-seven-nine-seven, which would allow a carrier of last resort provider to abandon essential responsibilities and leave large swaths of the most vulnerable Californians without reliable and affordable access to basic telephone service. AB two-seven-nine-seven relieves any provider of its carrier of last resort obligations when it sends notice to the CPUC stating that it currently has no customers or population in a census block and concludes it is no longer a carrier of last resort provider for that area. Additionally, a carrier of last resort provider is also relieved of its responsibilities under the law in census blocks that the provider states are served by two other alternative voice services if affordable as defined by the carrier of last resort provider. The mere notification by the carrier of last resort provider that it meets these requirements relieves it of the designation and rate requirements. This bill establishes a process wholly outside any oversight and approval framework, gifting for-profit companies with financial incentives to make self-interested findings to be the sole arbiters of the truth and accuracy of that information. The CPUC's core function is to balance procedures and safeguards to protect customers as well as ensure the provision of safe, reliable utility and infrastructure at reasonable rates. AB two-seven-nine-seven puts the industry's interests ahead of the needs of some of the most disadvantaged Californians and will interfere with the ability to reach emergency services, receive evacuation notices, or simply call a friend or family member for help. We support the evolution to more advanced technologies that provide reliability, redundancy and ubiquitous access to connectivity for both internet and voice service. However, AB two-seven-nine-seven does not provide a transition process for communities to receive these modern telecommunications and instead is a process for companies to abandon essential services at the cost of public safety and consumer safeguards. As we embark on another wildfire season, those in fire-prone areas continue to have the ability to receive evacuation notices and safety instructions even when power is lost through their plain old telephone lines. Shifting to modern technologies must be done through a collaborative effort with communities and the state to ensure that companies are held accountable and California residents never lose the ability to connect with the outside world. For these reasons, we oppose AB two-seven-nine-seven. Sincerely, Trinity County Boards of Supervisors Chair Rick Woodweller.
Thank you very much. Okay, any questions? Public comment in the room? Online?
I have no raised hands.
All right, that entertain a motion.
Move to approve as presented.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Supervisor Frazier?
Aye.
Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Chairman Luke Wyler?
Aye. Thank you. Thank you for Supervisor Cox for acting on that and, and, uh, acknowledgement to RCRC for being extremely responsive and having something available to help us, um, determine how we should best move forward. So thank you. All right, with that, we will be moving into closed session. We have three items on the closed session agenda. The first item is government code section five four nine five four point five C, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation. Number of cases, one, Cardona versus County of Trinity at all. Trinity County Superior Court Case Number two-three-C-V-zero-two-seven. Second item is government code section five four nine five four point five F, labor negotiations, county's designated representatives, Margaret Long, Leila Casis, and Suzie Hawkins, employee organizations, general unit. And item three, government code section five-five-five-four-nine-five-four-point-five-E, five-four-nine-five-four-point-five-E, public employee evaluation, county council. Uh, with that, do we have any public comment about the closed session agenda? In the room, online?
I have no raised hands.
With that, we will move into closed session. Thank you, everyone.